I'll start by saying, "Good evening, Washington Courthouse." And usually I say that for the people who are live streaming because as I look out there most nights, there's nobody there. So tonight, I feel like, "Good evening, Washington Courthouse." It is 7:30 PM on June 22nd, 2022, time for our second regular meeting of this month. At this time, Mr. Schultz will offer an invocation and Mr. Hawk will lead us in the pledge, if you're able, if you would please stand.
Please stand. Bow your heads. Lord, thank you for letting us gather here tonight. Give us the strength, the stability, the persistence, and the ability to make the right decisions for the citizens and the city of Washington Courthouse. Keep us all safe and in good health. Thank you for being there, and thank you for listening to us. Thank you for everything, and in your name, Lord, amen.
As we made a pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Roll call, Kelly.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Christman.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Lynch.
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Caleb Johnson.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have two sets of minutes this evening. The first one is from our regular council meeting on June 8th, 2022. Does anyone see any changes we need to make in those minutes? If not, do we have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as they're printed.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. And the special council meeting held June 13th, 2022. Does anyone see anything in those minutes that needs to be changed?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We next have a public hearing about the rezoning of blocks 606 through 609 inclusive on Gregg Street, from R2 multifamily residential district to R3 multifamily residential district. Do we have communications? Does anyone want to speak on behalf of that rezoning?
None.
And report of council committees. We have a kind of lengthy council committee report tonight. Mr. Hawk is going to read the minutes from the Service, Safety, and Recreation Committee.
The Service, Safety, and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at 105 North Main Street on Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, at 6:00 PM. Ted Hawk presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member; Ms. Kendra Hernandez, council member; Mr. Steve Schultz, council member; Mr. Jim Blair, council member; Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson; Mr. Jeff Fenari, police chief; Mr. Tim Downing, power chief; Mr. Joe Dannen, city manager; and Mr. Mark Bistic, city attorney. Number one, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Police Department. Chief Fenari noted that all patrol officers were close to completion with a mandatory 24-hour continued professional training. Number two, the committee was advised of a request from a citizen that the intersection of West Paint and North Main be made into a three-way stop due to speeding in the area. The committee noted the recent traffic speed study that was completed by the digital mobile speed sign on West Paint and North Main. No significant speeding issue was found. The administration noted that the sign will be placed facing both directions. The committee noted that stop sign placement does not usually rescue speed issues. Number three, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Fire Department. Chief Downing advised the committee of the Sound Off for Safety Program that was held for second and third grade students. Chief Downing noted that the fire department, along with the state fire marshal, placed smoke alarms in homes of children that did not have fire lines. Number four, the committee benefited from a general report of the Washington Service Department. The committee noted that the street department commenced signing changes and advertising regarding the implementation of the traffic changes at Temple Street and Veterans Way. Number five, the committee noted their concern regarding student safety during school hours. Chief Fenari noted that conversations had taken place with the superintendent of schools to discuss safety improvements. Number six, the administration advised the committee that the local paving program had begun. Number seven, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council for payment of the remaining balance to the Ohio Department of Transportation, District 6, on the Washington Avenue Reconstruction Project. Number eight, the committee recommended that legislation be brought to council recommending the bid of fill more construction for the Court Street roadway improvements. Did the music stop? That was just in your benefit there. Make things go a little smoother since you have two pages. Number nine, the administration advised the committee that leak detection had commenced. Approximate loss of 150,000 gallons per day from the water system is estimated. The committee noted that fire hydrant painting had begun. The committee noted that the global information system was being improved to coordinate work orders. Number 12, the committee noted that the pickleball court reconstruction was progressing. The administration noted that inclement weather had delayed the project. Thirteen, the committee noted that disc golf course was progressing. Fourteen, the committee noted that the inclement weather had delayed the construction of the splash pad at Washington Park. The administration advised the committee that rain had caused slight imperfections with the concrete and that a rubberized texture coating may be used. Number fifteen, the administration advised the committee that the fitness pad was progressing. The committee noted a sample of the wall painting and recommended to proceed with a landscaped scene. Number sixteen, the committee recommended that the administration proceed with discussions with Washington City Schools regarding annexation of the property near the YMCA. Seventeen, the administration advised the committee of the need to begin discussions regarding the construction of a new water plant and reservoir to handle future growth. The committee noted the long-term benefit of an additional reservoir within the community and increased raw water storage. The committee recommended that discussions proceed. Number eighteen, Mr. Blair suggested a special council meeting for the purpose of discussing personnel matters. The committee recommended a special meeting for Monday, June 13th, at 5:00 PM be held. The committee continued and added that legislation pertaining to the Court Street roadway improvement be added to the agenda. Number nineteen, the administration advised the committee of citizens concerning regarding unauthorized persons facing at the older reservoir. The committee noted damage to the fence. Number twenty, the administration noted mosquito spraying would begin soon. The committee requested that a copy of the schedule be placed on city's social media once available. Twenty-one, the committee noted that the facade grant applications were ready for downtown business. Respectfully submitted, Ted Hawk, Chairperson, Service, Safety, and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, recording secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Hawk. For those who aren't normal at council meetings, that's a really long report for one most of them. Are there any questions, comments about that report?
Can I just ask the chairman about number thirteen, the disc golf course? Where do we stand on that as far as how many holes is set up? Are they ready to go? Or?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Dennen, I think.
That's largely being constructed by volunteers. They have had some difficulties with that area stays wet. At the end of the day, though, you will have 18 holes back there, but it has been complicated by that moving concrete around in there has been difficult. The other thing, we interceded on their behalf because honestly, and I don't quite understand this, getting concrete now can be quite difficult. That is one thing that for whatever bizarre reason is in short supply, and we had to intercede on their behalf about even getting concrete. But they are making steady progress, but the area that they're doing that in, that that ground is not being very cooperative at all.
Down by the creek, and there's been a lot of water. Who would think?
Any other?
Yes, I do have one more question. Number fourteen, about the splash pad and the imperfection in the concrete, was there a rubberized texture? Did it have to be used, or has it already been used?
The kids have been playing on it. It doesn't seem to be an issue at all, so we are probably going to watch that for a little bit longer, but it would appear that we're going to be fine.
Okay, thank you.
Others? Someone want to make a motion to accept that report?
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Report that the city manager, Mr. Dennen, you're up.
Thank you. We're very pleased with the response to the splash pad and the numbers of kids that we have seen out there in this hot weather. That has been something that a lot of people have really enjoyed. We will be making some adjustments to the flow rate of the water for some of the devices in the splash pad. We've had a little few little challenges there. The shelter house at the splash pad, it is so adults can get out of the sun while the kids play on the splash pad. We have not built the largest covered ashtray in Washington Courthouse, and folks, you need to, litter has become an issue down there and a problem, and we've done this wonderful thing for young people in the community. We need to make an effort to keep that cleaned up so it looks decent and nice, and that is something, that is the one thing that has been very frustrating and a bit disappointing. Fitness pad installation in that area will begin soon. Pickleball, we should be maybe paving that on Friday. That'll use a little bit different rubberized asphalt, so if the weather cooperates, we should be marching along just fine there. Street paving, would like to express thanks for citizens, for their cooperation and their understanding. I know when we have streets shut off, that that can be frustrating to folks, but it's a tremendous amount of work for the street department and Pete Harpary and the water distribution folks. We would just like to thank them for their efforts. We fixed a leak on Bell Avenue, and our leak problem got better, and now it's worse than it was before. So we will continue to be out looking for our leak issue and trying to figure out what is going on there, but we still have a high rate of demand at the water plant that we are having to satisfy that should not be there, and that is something you will see us out poking around, looking around. I would like to thank all the volunteers for the longest day event downtown and the folks that participated in the event. It was very nice, and the Dragon Angels did a wonderful job with the car show. Juneteenth in the Washington Cemetery, would like to thank Paul LaRue, and I'm going to talk about prominent early African-American citizens in Washington Courthouse, in part because I've got a captive audience. You've got to listen. And Paul did a very nice walk through the cemetery. Certainly, there's other people that he could have noted, but you try to make the walk about, you want it to be about not more than a half mile. So not in any particular order. Clarence Powell and Sam Lucas were half-brothers born in slavery, and in Washington Courthouse, you don't think about that you'd have people that were born in slavery buried in that cemetery out there. Interestingly, they were both veterans of the Civil War. They belong to the GAR, Grand Army of the Republic Post 244. Lucas was famous, he was a performer, and he was the first African-American to portray the character Uncle Tom onstage and in a silent movie in about 1914. Sadie Woods was married to Granville Woods, and if you went to Iman Park, the locomotive, you'll find not far from it a historical marker for Granville. He was a very accomplished inventor. Most of it dealt with safety issues related to the railroad. And you know an unusual amount about Granville because in his career, there was a tremendous amount of litigation of him defending his patents against various people that would infringe upon them, and the key to that is that you have a lot of depositions from Granville. Now, I'm not saying that people, when they write notes about their past life, or they write diaries, or they write their memoirs, sometimes their memory can be, well, selective. In the case of Granville Woods, you have a lot of very factual information. Sadie, his wife, was from here. They were married for a short time. They lived in Cincinnati, and Sadie gets noted because the students, when Paul taught school, LaRue, did a tremendous amount of work to locate, and her grave was unmarked. And they did a tremendous amount of work making sure that that grave was marked and identified. John Taylor was born enslaved in Kentucky, served in the Union Army, moved to Washington Courthouse, and became part eventually associated with the Jackson family. Hattie Jackson, which is a name that's familiar in the community, but a lot of people, they don't associate the story there. President of the Women's Auxiliary Ohio State Baptist Convention. Hattie was very much involved in raising funds to support the missionary work of Baptist churches. And it's not unusual in a historically black Baptist church for there to be like a Hattie Jackson Guild or Society. Those are very common, and it's odd that that name lives in the memory of the community, but a lot of times, we don't understand what it is, and for a lot of other places, Hattie Jackson is a much bigger deal ironically than she is here, but she's buried out that cemetery, has a lovely monument that's back towards the back section along the trail, but that was to commemorate her service to the Baptist Church. John Wilson Bunch was also a veteran of Civil War, also a member of the GAR Post 244. He married Phyllis Jones, and Phyllis Jones, May Bell, and Clarabelle's aunt, which there's still a number of relatives in that family that live in the community. Lived in the Dayton Soldiers' Home, which that was not, you could check yourself in and out. It wasn't like you were there admitted forever. You could come in and out, but he wished to be buried back in Washington Courthouse. You have also Soldiers' Row there that the students and Paul LaRue, and quite honestly, ranking Kirkpatrick, who is unfortunately no longer with us from the cemetery, worked diligently on for years. William Nelson, last post commander of the GAR Post 244. He served with the 55th Massachusetts, died 1939, aged 94, and the obituary is very unusual because it notes that he was the next-to-last veteran of the Civil War to pass away in the community, that there was one other gentleman still with us at the time. John Brandon, a World War I vet, trained at Camp Sherman, Pioneer Infantry Regiment, died in '37, aged 43. King Anderson is perhaps the most notable, or notorious in a way. In fact, there was a section of the community nicknamed Andersonville, and it's ironic that you have DORA on the agenda. King Anderson was a very successful bar owner, amassed some property around Andersonville, which would have been East Paint, down towards Delaware and that area down there, but commonly nicknamed Andersonville. He was also a Civil War veteran in GR Post Member 244. Alexander Anderson was a Civil War veteran, same GR Post, First Post Commander, is also an early city council member, which is something you don't associate. A lot of those veterans of the Civil War, they come back from the Civil War, and they play active parts in the life of the community. In fact, King Anderson, as I recall, now, it's just my recollection, was very involved with, at one point in time, there were schools in Washington Courthouse were segregated. The Black School was on John Street, and King Anderson was very vocal about when that school building became no longer serviceable. There was an issue with Storm Cyclone, I can't remember, about integrating the schools. Now, it would be nice to tell you that the school board was persuaded by his arguments, but a great deal laid on their mind that if they integrated schools, they wouldn't have to build a new building in the expense of that. But Paul did an excellent job, and what's notable about Paul LaRue when we took the walk, he had Don Moore there too, and he had Ben Robey. And what occurred to me when they were walking together in the cemetery, there you have three people that have been very dedicated to the community of Washington Courthouse, and they all worked for Washington City Schools, but the other thing that they have in common is that none of the three grew up here. They were all transplants to the community, who became very much fixtures in the community, and we sincerely appreciate their efforts over the years. New legislation, you have the rezoning from R2 to R3. You have Washington Avenue, and it's been a long time since the Washington Avenue project's been done. ODOT, because of COVID and lots of other complications, didn't close out the project, and we owe them $38,000. That was a cooperative project with ODOT. District 6 was very helpful and invested huge amounts of resources in the project. We would very much like you to make District 6 whole and proceed with the legislation. Arguably, you could argue that you don't need it, but District 6 has always been helpful to us, and it's something that we recommend that you do to close that project out and finally be done with it. Resolution R23-2002, the suggestion is that you amend that to reflect a contract amount of $309,48, and what we are doing is adding the two alternate bids. The first one replaces and fixes streetlights in the downtown in addition to the street work, which those decorative streetlights, finding ones that are close, because the ones that we have are no longer manufactured, has been very difficult, and we'd very much like to progress with that. And then the second alternate coats the Court Street Bridge and does work down there to help it resist corrosion, graffiti, and all the other nasty things that can happen to a bridge that is stuck out there in the weather 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. That's the whole show I got for tonight.
Any questions of the city manager? Thank you, Mr. Dennen. Madam Director of Finance, what do you have?
I want to be a little shorter. So I just want to report that financially, the city's doing well, which is always good. We currently have about $2.7 million in our general fund, and in the month of May, we collected about $210,000 in city income tax, so we're about halfway through the year now. So year-to-date, we've collected so far 1.2 million dollars in income taxes. We have three investment accounts currently, and in the month of May, they did pretty well, and we earned some interest, so those have increased in value, so that's always good. And I don't think I have anything else. Any questions?
I would like to introduce you to our populace here. This is our new finance director, Christina Collins.
Thank you.
Comes to us from O'Bets, Ohio.
Yes, O'Bets. The big village of O'Bets.
She will be moving to our community very shortly.
All right. The city attorney had a family responsibility in the city, so he has to be excused, as he was. So the next thing on the agenda is our local residents and taxpayers. Here's the way we do this. If you have signed up, and I'll kind of go through the list here if I can read your name. You come to the podium, state your name and your address, and that's for the record, and that would be very helpful. We obviously, last meeting, had an extensive discussion about this, and so we're very pleased to have people here to discuss the issue. The only thing I ask is, is that you keep your remarks brief, because there's several people who want to speak. Again, I'm not trying to cut you off, but just try to keep it brief, and that'll give everybody a chance to speak. And I believe the first one who signed up was Dan, is it Dan Justice? Come up, Dan, and state your name and address.
My name is Dan Justice of 2693 Warrior Court, Washington Courthouse, and I would like to speak to the issue of Ordinance 6, 2022. I have read this ordinance, and I just have a few questions. Don't have to be answered immediately, but I do have a copy of those questions I'll give just for the council's consideration.
Okay.
The first question would be, have all the businesses that are involved in the DORA outline area been contacted for their opinions, since this would directly affect them? The next would be, what would prevent someone from entering a business with alcohol if that business did not care for that? And I know that they can put a sign up, but there still might be some infraction of that. What would, how do we keep consuming in the designated area? I saw the signs, but I know people as well, and I know that that probably won't mean a lot to someone unless there is a way or means of enforcing that. And how do we keep it from being passed to underage drinkers? I know in the taverns, they'll check your ID, there's a system in place, but on the street, what's to say, you know, I don't go get a drink, bring it out, and hand it to someone? And then we have an underage drinking problem that I don't think we want. And then will it be only served in our existing taverns, or will there be additional street options set up for serving alcohol? Then our police department, sheriff department, my question was, have they been asked their opinion concerning this? Because obviously, it will require an additional police presence, and I'm not sure that our police department isn't strained already, so that is a concern. And I do understand the members of council, that there is a member of council that has a liquor license that voted for this, and I wondered if that was a conflict of interest simply because of that. I understand that there could be an opportunity for an increase of income and possible influx of business. of business from out of town, but I think the liabilities are there as well. Intoxication afterwards, the events could be a problem in getting people home safely. Public intoxication, I do not believe is a good image of our community at all. And one example, Circleville has the DORA in place and shut it down during the pumpkin festival because of the problems that it was causing, and I'm just concerned about those issues. So I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Dan. I'll leave a copy of those questions.
Yes. Yes. She can make us copies. Would you make me a copy of that also? Thank you. Patricia Seymour. Again, would you state your name and address?
Patricia Seymour, eight oh three Yeoman Street, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. And I'm just interested in not opening Pandora's Box. I'm from the big city. I lived in Columbus for twenty-plus years, lived in Minneapolis. We did the gallery hop in Columbus, and at that time, there was no alcohol served that could go out onto the street. I would be concerned about ruining the pristine image that downtown Washington Courthouse has right now, and the family, community liability, you know, also, to get down to the nitty-gritty. I know, as an ex-drinker, okay, that there's a possibility of vomit, of cleanup, and all of that, and I would like to know who would be responsible for that. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Estle, you're up next.
Mary Estle, three ninety-nine Ely Street, Washington Courthouse. I did not come to share anything or ask anything, but I thank you for the right to do that. And I would just say, in thinking all of it over, I just think it's a bad idea. I think our town is good the way it is, and I would just hate to see things that might cause a lot of other bad things that might come up with that. And I think of, you know, people that, you know, I know that one person going in a shop and drinking, but you never know when that might cause that person to later on become an alcoholic and, you know, not be able to get out from under that. So that's my thing. I think it's best that we don't have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Berry, you're up.
I'm Bill Berry from two ten Buckeye Road. I see this from a different perspective. The safety of all the people in this community. You can't cross the street without getting hit. You can't go use a crosswalk, because everybody thinks S-O-T, S-T-O-P means step, toe, on pedal. They don't stop for red lights, they just go. They don't care, they pull up into it, they block the crosswalks. You can't cross anything. Now, you're gonna put somebody alcohol in their system, what's gonna happen? Who's gonna be responsible for that? Some people, alcohol affects them a whole lot different ways. And with everything that's going on, you've got these heavy trucks going through it down, they get cranking, having driven a semi, grain trucks running between Legos eighty thousand pounds, these trucks are running between eighty and a hundred thousand pounds. It takes a hundred fifty to three hundred feet to stop these trucks. How are you gonna stop it? You can't do it. Little kid runs out, or somebody's been drinking, walks out. Bam, they're done. Who's gonna be responsible for that? I just don't think I see for the community. That's supposed to send too much, too much jeopardy. The Gordon Lord didn't decide to put us this way to be this. You opened a meeting with prayer. You prayed to him. You think he wants us to do this? I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Lois Howard, you're up.
I thank you all. I'm Lois Howard, one thirty-nine Laurel Road, in Washington Courthouse. And I just had some concerns. I did get the DORA packet, and I just had, I noticed the Main Street Fayette, and I'm not sure who all is involved in that or what that is. I noticed there was an errand, I forget the name, but that signed a letter. But I'm not sure who that involves, but they, they made this statement, "It's a place we gather as a community," and that's true. But there are some folks that would be offended and uncomfortable with people that are walking down the street with alcohol. And I would be one of those, because of my background, because of my growing up years, and because of the experience I had with an alcoholic parent. And I know not everybody's had that experience, I understand that, but when you have had it, it makes a big difference in how you look at alcohol and consumption of it. And I know that there are some people that probably can drink, and they're fine, but as was stated before, there are others that can't handle it. And those people can drive drunk. Who's to say if they carry the cup for those several hours that they won't be able to drive safely? And I know we've had an incident, an incident or two in our community over the past years, several years ago, where a young man was killed riding his bicycle by a drunk driver. And I know the family, and it's devastating. How do you get that child back? You don't. Is it worth, is it worth that? Is a life worth some alcohol? To me, it's not. I was also, and a lot of these points were already made. Dan covered a lot of the things that I was gonna cover, but I also have a son-in-law that's a law enforcement officer. He has four little boys, and I'm a little concerned about his safety. They're already, I think, strapped, I think, and I admire, I admire our law enforcement and our fire department folks, I truly do. And I don't want to see those boys without a daddy. If this would endanger him more and jeopardize him more, it's not worth it to me. It's not worth it to me. It's just not. And I understand, when you own a business, I haven't owned a business, I know nothing about it, but, and I understand you want to make a profit, and you want to do better, and you want to, you know, but to me, at what cost? And I would hope that we could maybe come up with some other ideas where we could, you know, maybe help our business people, our business folks earn more money somehow. Maybe we could all participate more as a, as a community, and try to work on that in another way. But I do have those concerns, and also, I was concerned about a child maybe picking up a cup and drinking it, or the minors that would maybe be offered alcohol. And then I also wondered about the monitoring it, and, and I just wanted to say, I love Washington Courthouse. I love this community, I love what it is now. And I love that we can have our differences and still love each other. I do, I think we can all have our opinions and still love each other through it. But I know last, last meeting, it was stated that I wish we were more like Columbus or Chillicothe. I don't, I don't, I love this community. I don't want to have to worry about the crimes and the, the traffic jams and the noise. I love little Washington Courthouse, that's why I like to live here. I don't want to have to deal with those things, and I know those are successful, and they, and they have the monies to do bigger and greater things with, but there's still a place like Washington Courthouse to me. I love little Washington Courthouse. So I hope, I, I am against it, and I'm against DORA for those reasons, and I, again, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate what you all do, I do. And hearing this, and having been to a couple of meetings, I respect you even, even more so because of all the issues that you're dealing with, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Deborah Benniger. I live at seven sixteen Park Drive. I've been a member of this community for thirty-five years. I just noticed recently that the city has been repainting the lines in our community, you know, all the streets. And I noticed how much I appreciated those lines, you know? And what are those lines for? They're to keep us safe, and to keep others safe. And I kind of thought about the situation in a way that we're kind of removing lines. We're kind of, I never seen one street where nobody, where they painted over them in any way, shape, or form, but they kept those lines. Those lines are there for our safety. And I think our world is going that way right now. We're removing lines. We're, we're removing safety zones. And I have children, they're all adults now, but I have grandchildren. They're very important to me, and the thought of losing one to a drunk driver is unthinkable, unimaginable. I used to be that way. I, my father also was a functioning alcoholic. I don't have a whole lot of good memories of my childhood, because my dad was neglectful, he didn't keep his promises. He didn't care for us as he needed to. There was times we went without a water, there was times when food was, was low. I understand what alcohol does to people. And you know, you would think that I wouldn't have that problem, but I did. It was introduced to me when I was thirteen years old. And from the time I was thirteen to sixteen, I, I drank. In fact, I began to wonder if I was a functioning alcoholic, I mean, functioning, I went to school. A lot of things suffered during that time, though. My, my grades, my relationships, and as we all know, alcohol affects our judgment, our inhibitions, our reactions, and our coordination. It's gonna be, you're gonna have impaired people. I'm sorry. We're human, we always like to cross the boundaries, and those boundaries are made for our safety. What you do in your own home is, is your responsibility, but what you do in the public forum affects all of us. And I don't want to go down that road. And as, as a teenager, I drove or rode with people who were impaired. I had anger issues. I got pregnant when I was seventeen years old. And to this day, I'm thankful that I didn't have an abortion. That's another barrier we crossed. How many barriers do we have to cross? How many lines do we have to erase? Am I saying that we're terrible people? No, I'm saying we're human, and we need those lines and barriers. I'm actually surprised I lived through my teenage years. I never thought I would, but I did. And I do believe that this is going to put families at risk, drunk driving. I believe it's gonna put our police force at risk. And you say, oh, it's just a drink. I never stopped at one. I never stopped at one. I can't be trusted to drink, to be honest. And how's this gonna affect law enforcement? How's it gonna, I mean, and the mess? And then we're, the concealed carry thing? What's gonna happen with that? Where do most fights originate? Where do they usually start? In public places, people get hurt. Unfortunately, it's happened in our schools. When are, when are the boundaries gonna be set and stay there? We're not supposed to move them. They were put there for a reason. And I don't want to say this, and I know this sounds terrible, but we already have a drug problem in this, in the, in Washington Courthouse. It's been here a long time. When I was a teenager, this is where we came to get them. Yeah, I did that too. This is where we came. Why? We're, we're right in the middle of the big cities, perfect place. And we're gonna add alcohol to the situation. It's hard to balance what will truly benefit, the community or the businesses in the long run. Are we going to accept businesses over what a community, you're put in place here to protect us, to make wise decisions? You talk to God? Well, there's nothing really good said in the Bible about drinking. But I, I want to be honest, I don't think alcohol is the answer to revenue. In fact, I think it will cost us more in the long run. I appreciate your time, I appreciate you listening to me, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jerry Shaw. I live at five thirty-eighth Albin Avenue, Washington Courthouse, Ohio. And I think you guys ought to stop and realize how many tax dollars we're spending in this community for drug and alcohol rehabilitation. And if you guys vote for this ordinance, all you're doing is promoting alcohol downtown and in the community. And I don't think our city, city councilman should be promoting the use of alcohol. That's about all I have to say. I've lived in this community quite a while, I like it, and I certainly will not be able to shop downtown if this happens. I won't have my wife or my family or anything go down there and shop in these stores, if they want, if they want to do that. We can do better things to help the downtown than this, a lot better. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Norman, you're up.
Norman May, ten twenty Cedar Street, apartment one. Just a couple of comments. Like everybody else has said, it's not a good look. I can't predict, or nobody else can, what's gonna happen when you introduce alcohol in a situation, but I can tell you this, there's more negatives than there are positives. Few years ago, we didn't have alcohol at all. Then we decided we wanted to have beer gardens. Okay, now we have those. Now we're not content with that. Now we want to walk around with it. Okay, where does it go from there? I hate to think. What's, what's gonna happen next? What's gonna come up? But that isn't enough. We want something more. Where does it end? And like everybody said, we've got serious drug problems in this town already, and if you think alcohol's not a drug problem, then you're not informed. But also, I'd just like to say, I agree that there's a conflict of interest with a council person voting on something that they're a part of, an ordinance. It's a definite conflict of interest. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Ray, I live at five oh six East Market Street, in Washington Courthouse. And I'm here to be a proponent of DORA, unlike the previous people. I am in real estate, commercial real estate, I do a lot of business, real estate business in downtown. And by the way, I appreciate the council's facade grant program, which is helping. In fact, just today, there was a deal that was helped by that. But I'm here because I, what I read in the newspaper, at the first reading, and some of the concerns, what I've heard tonight, it's what if, what if, what if? These, this program that you are considering is well-tested, it has been used, it's not a guinea pig, it's, it's been used elsewhere. I met within the last week with the chief of police here in Washington to ask him, because I would consider him to be an authority on the implication of passing this legislation. And his comment to me was, and I would encourage you to have conversations with him as well, if you haven't, is that there will not, there has not been a problem, and in all likelihood, in the research that he has done, there will not be a problem. And it will be very closely monitored, and the program will be changed, tweaked, if there is a problem. And it will definitely be a benefit to the traffic in downtown. And I think we are mostly, we are proponents of improving the quality of our shops and of our shopping, and of our image of downtown Washington Courthouse. And I think we are very premature in suggesting that there will be the problems that have been brought up tonight, underage, police, burden on police, cleanup, because the, the police chief himself said that has not been the case. And the track record is other events that have happened, temporary liquor permits that have been held in various locations for years in the city of Washington Courthouse, primarily as benefits, and there has simply not been a problem as a result of those events. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we have heard nine people speak this evening, and And I appreciate all nine of you, and I promise you, we've listened. Whether we agree or disagree, we've listened. And so, one of the things that makes, uh, our country, uh, great is that you have the opportunity as citizens, and we're citizens too, to express your opinions and, and come to meetings. And we love to have people here. Like I told you to start, it's usually blank out there, there's nobody. So, we like having people here. And, uh, for those of you who didn't speak, I know you have a concern about it too, so I appreciate your being here. Okay. With that, we're going to proceed with the meeting. And next on the agenda is our legislation. And the first is legis, of legislation previously introduced is ordinance number four, twenty twenty-two. It's third reading.
I'm gonna be the place ordinance number four, twenty twenty-two on a third reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number four dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, or his designated to enter into an enterprise zone agreement with Make Build Ship LLC.
Move for passage.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance number five, twenty twenty-two, and it's third reading.
I'll move that we put ordinance five, twenty twenty-two on third reading.
Second.
Who said that? I missed it.
Ted.
Ted, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number five dash two thousand and twenty-two, an ordinance enacting and adopting a supplement to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Washington courthouse, Bay County, Ohio.
I'll move for passage on that.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next is ordinance number six, twenty twenty-two, second reading.
I'll move that we put ordinance six, twenty twenty-two on second reading.
Second.
Discussion.
Well, I would like to address some issues. So, first of all, I'm Kendra Hernandez. I own Back in Time Flower and Gift Shop. I have been here twenty years on the corner. And it is not easy owning a small business. I am a single mom. I have a twelve-year-old son who is fabulous, at the top of his class. And he is very, very active. And I raise him every day. He's friends with Lois's grandsons. They play on the same baseball team. People have addressed, and I also want to say that I'm highly involved in my church at First Presbyterian, at First Presbyterian, right across from the post office. I do not agree with the majority of you, so I have to say that. I believe that alcoholism is something that you're either born with or not. And it's very unfortunate for those who do have that gene within them. It's passed on, it's proven. I believe that it's also handled with education, discipline, like everything else. And the way I understand the Bible, and I did papers on this because I went to a Baptist college, that Jesus did serve alcoholic wine. So, when we start building those lines, I just think we need to be careful. Anything that is not done in moderation, including religion, including alcohol, including sex, including anything, if it's not done in moderation, it is a sin, the way I understand the Bible and the way I've been raised. Other people have addressed that it's a conflict of interest for me. So, I will tell you this, that I have a liquor license. I have wine tastings, which I have invited many of you to come and see. I have yet in four years to have an alcoholic person or a person who uses the alcohol to the extent that it disrupts anyone. We also provide live entertainment to do something downtown. Um, and it's free, other than purchasing the alcohol, but the entertainment is free. If I were voting to benefit me tonight, I would not be voting for the DORA. And here's why. By allowing the DORA, I'm now letting someone buy a beverage at my store and then walk down the street. Currently, if they're, the way it is currently, they have to drink on my patio within my perimeters. Okay, does that make sense to everyone? So, by me voting for DORA tonight, it's not a conflict of interest. It does not benefit me. It benefits my community. And when I say my community, I mean members that have come to me and said, I want this to happen. They're not here. But many people have come to me and told me they want that. And I am voting for businesses who want it, the downtown. I am voting for people who want something to do and don't have to leave town. You can come to my patio and enjoy the music and you do not have to drink. That is a choice. And we are taught through our liquor license how to handle, handle vomit. We are taught all of that. I have to go through training for all of that. So, tonight, I will be supporting it. And I'm sorry if individuals in this room don't want to support me anymore as a business. I think that's really sad because I give a lot to the community. But I am voting for it because I feel like it is the best thing that we can do for the community. And if you don't want to participate, then by all means, don't. I mean, I'm not forcing someone. But this is something that I have had many people come, we've worked on it for years, trying to get it to go through. And so, I apologize that we don't agree. But I am a Christian. I go to church regularly, and I'm raising a child who I believe it, it's about moderation and education.
Any other?
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm opposed to it, and I'm not as eloquent as you are on this. But I agree with the things that have been said in our position. And as far as participation goes, whether I have a choice or not, maybe I don't want to have to make a choice when I come downtown and, uh, and see this happening around. I, I, it, it just, like somebody said, there's more negatives than there are positives. I mean, really, you, I don't think you can say that honestly, that, that it's not a problem.
So, can I say this to you, Ted? When was the last time you were downtown? I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be rude, but if you're gonna say that to me.
Yes.
I mean, I, I want to see that if you're saying that, then support downtown. I want to see you downtown regularly exercising and supporting the downtown. You can't say that and not, you know what I mean? You gotta walk the walk.
I can, what, are you saying I don't come downtown?
I'm just saying, how often do you support downtown? How often do you come downtown?
Well, I buy locally. I really do. And.
Again, we gave you a chance. Norman.
You've been talking the whole time.
Listen.
Giving you facts.
Hold it. We gave everybody who asked to speak a chance to speak. This is our chance. We have to make tough decisions. We deserve the right to talk about it amongst ourselves.
I agree.
And so, I don't want to hear any more comments. And I'm trying to be respectful, but please you be respectful. Ted, continue.
Well, I, I don't want to necessarily badmouth any one single person, but I, I don't think, and I said this the last time, using the Bible to support something like this is wrong. And there are a lot of examples in the Bible where alcoholism has really been a problem. And I don't think Jesus promoted walking around with alcohol in, in the street or anywhere. And so, that's one thing. But all in all, I just, I support what's been said. I, I don't have the eloquence to say it like everybody else does. But it's just not a good thing, as far as I'm concerned. And I would hope that we would not vote to approve it. Thank you.
Others?
I think my position is very clear. Uh, I, and I mentioned this last week, a lot of you won't hear, but I would encourage you to go to the city building downtown and ask for a packet about DORA. To be intelligently informed about really what's involved. I think you would find this advantageous. You, you that have already got it, I, I could tell when you spoke that you've already looked at some of this. And I also would encourage you to go to my Facebook page, Jim Blair WCH Council. I put a post on there in response to a citizen that asked me my opinion, which I won't delay tonight. I, I encourage you to go to that. But I also, Mr. Hawk, and I do oppose DORA the way I see it right now. We still have one more hearing, and, um, I haven't really seen anything yet that really would change my mind. So, I have, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Jim?
Not too much. Um, years ago, we had bars downtown. And as I recall, the people that wanted to get drunk headed for the bars, not a flower shop or a shoe store, didn't go to Wade's. Uh, and I don't think that's probably changed a lot. If they're really wanting to get drunk or, or drink something, they're going to do it, whether it's some little old lady's carrying a, a little glass of wine down the street or not. But anyway, I, I just don't think that it's, yes, it could be problems. But I don't think it's a tremendous, great big problem like we, some of us think. I'm not saying I approve of drinking or getting drunk or anything like that, driving drunk. But I just don't see the DORA creating alcoholics downtown on, what is it, two weekends a month?
Four days a month.
Friday and Saturday, Saturday?
Friday and Saturday, twice a month.
You tell how much attention.
And it's not gonna be, always be that necessarily, so.
Could be changed. But that's all I have, it's just food for thought. Thank you. Thanks all of you for coming, too.
Yeah.
I really don't appreciate our police chief being dragged into this. And, uh, I've never heard him make statements like you said he's said. And I, it's just, I don't think that was appropriate.
Well, I'll add, because I have spoke to many police officers, and none of them have a concern about this. Because I, I, I'm doing my research when I'm having them out, what do you think about the DORA? Do you have any concerns? And no one has, I have not spoke to the chief, but I have spoke to other officers.
Well, let's let the chief speak, he's here.
Do you have, do you, the, the conversation that was brought up is if you feel that the DORA will enhance issues, cause problems, add, um, additional work for you and your staff?
My point would be put on spot.
Sorry.
Um, do I think it would be completely devoid of any additional problem? No. Or would, would it be significant to the point where it would cause, do I think it's gonna cause any great issue for the police department? No. My understanding of the DORA so far is essentially nay, temporarily suspending the open container. All other alcohol related laws are still going to be in full effect. Any misconduct, any disorderly conduct will still be enforced by my officers. And, uh, and those who need to be cited or jailed will be cited or jailed, you know? Other than that, would there be, couldn't there be some ancillary problems? Yes, but I don't think to the point where it would cause any, I don't foresee it causing any major destruction for the police department.
Mr. Schultz, do you have any comments?
Well, has anyone ever went to the keg and had something to eat? Did you ever go to Streetside sixty-two, had something to eat? Did you ever go to Donato's Pizza and get a pizza? Did you ever go to, uh, here, to, uh, what is it, uh?
The golf course.
Yeah, the golf course? Any of those restaurants, what do you see? You're sitting there having your meal, and about a fourth of the people sitting in there are doing what? Drinking. They're all drinking. Maybe you're not, I'm not a drinker, and I never will be a drinker. I never was, never will. But it's in our community everywhere we go. If you want to go out and have a meal, Roosters is the other place out there. If you want to go have a meal, you're gonna be sitting there where there's a bar, people are drinking. Now, they're drinking, what do they have to do? They have to get up, they have to walk out to the parking lot, get in their car. When was the last time you remember somebody coming out of any of those restaurants and ran into somebody or had an accident coming out of those restaurants? I don't remember any of it hardly. I don't remember anything like that happening. When was the last time the police department had to go to the keg or Streetside or, or Roosters and take a drunk out of there because they were carrying them? I don't remember any time. I don't remember. Maybe it has happened, I just.
We, we do want to, you shouldn't have calls of someone taxi attempting to leave, but other than that.
Yeah.
You know? You don't usually have major instances where we have to pull people out of the south to the north.
Right. That's, that's what I'm saying, we live with it every day. We, in, in, in the DORA, I don't think you even notice it. Because quite frankly, I don't think that many people are gonna be downtown doing it. So, quite, I just don't think it's gonna happen on a regular basis. Plus, they're not gonna do it in the wintertime for sure. They may have a DORA, but it's not gonna happen. There's only two or three months out of the year, it's probably gonna be interesting to anybody. But I just don't see it happening. I, I, I just don't see a big, big problem. It will help the downtown, it hopefully, you know, when you talk to citizens in the city, they all say one thing. How comes we can't have this restaurant? How comes we can't have that restaurant? How comes this business isn't here? How comes that business isn't here? Because we're not, probably, we're not a growing community like we should be. We're not, we don't attract other restaurants. Because when a restaurant comes here, especially if it's a known chain of some sort, most of them want a liquor license, or else they're not coming. And everybody goes out of town Saturday night, Friday night, Saturday night. Everybody leaves town, and where you go, Chillicothe, Grove City or someplace, you go to a restaurant, Longhorn or one of those, Olive Gardens, they all serve liquor. It is in, uh, everywhere we go, and we don't even pay attention to it. You're sitting there drinking your, your, your Pepsi, your, your tea and your water, and you, the guy across the table right next to you, he's drinking. But you never paid attention to it, because you don't worry about it. It's the same thing, the door is gonna be down, you will never notice it properly. You, you just won't notice it, I don't believe. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Um, the other thing I would mention, and I said this last time, a few of you were here last time, I do not drink alcohol. I personally wish nobody did. But you know what? They do. And we tried in this country to ban it, it didn't work. While we had prohibition, people were drinking. And I think what I've heard tonight is maybe even more than DORA, it's just about alcohol. And I have a problem with alcohol, but I can't do anything about it. If this becomes an issue that some of you brought up, if I thought for one second that some of the students I teach and so on were going downtown and getting alcohol illegally during DORA. If I see and hear that people are going around and drunk vomiting and all those kind of things. I will be the very first person to vote to remove DORA. I guarantee you that, one hundred percent guarantee you that. I personally, I'm like what Steve just said. I don't think it's gonna be a big issue because I don't think a lot of people are gonna do that. But if they do and if it becomes a big issue, then I personally would vote to remove it. And I don't know how many people know this, but even if council votes to do this, DORA. It still has to be approved by the state, am I correct, Mr. Dennis?
We would send off the packet of information to the state along with council's determination.
So, at this point in time, I support it. Not because I will use it, not because I even, I've already told you, I don't drink. But I support it, I wanna see what happens. If it's a problem, now I know what somebody's gonna say. Okay Dale, the first time somebody gets killed by a drunk driver, then you're gonna vote against it. Again, that can happen anytime and does happen. Why? Because people drink and they drive. It's illegal. It's illegal to give a person under twenty-one alcohol. All those things are illegal and all those things would be dealt with. I will be the first to vote to remove DORA if any of those things that you, that you have brought up very nicely tonight. If any of those things you brought up happen, I will promise you, I will vote to get rid of it. It's, in that case, it's not worth it. But I think we can try it, we can see. I really think, again, with most people, it's, it's an alcohol issue. And I understand that. I do understand. I don't think, I agree with Ted, I don't think it's a religious issue. And so, anyway, I really truly appreciate everybody coming in, believe me, I listen to all of you. And you have good points and you have good questions, I think most of which we can answer. The gentleman that had the questions for us. I think that we can answer those for you. But I really appreciate it and I, and I, I mean that. And I said last week, for those of you who weren't here. It's always nice to think about, you know, I wanna run for city council, I get elected and that's really nice. And I get to have a say in things and all that kind of stuff. And then issues like this come up. I'm gonna tell you something. It is not easy. I respect every one of you who got up here tonight and told us how you feel about it. I really do. I really do. And it's not easy. It is not easy at all. So, I just want you to know that. And it's not that we haven't put a lot of thought into that.
Well, I also would like to add that when we're sitting up here, we love our community or we wouldn't be doing this, every one of us. Because it's not fun, sometimes. Sometimes it's really fun, but other times it is not fun. And it's, we all care about our community and our citizens and we love living here, so.
If, for those of you who don't know, there is a third reading before this is passed by city council. This is only the second reading. So, at our meeting, first meeting in July would be the third meeting. We welcome you to come back and talk to us again. With that having been said, Kelly, will you give us a roll call?
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
No.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
No.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-two. An ordinance approving and authorizing the creation of a designated outdoor refreshment area for Main Street Fayette.
Next, we have resolution number R nineteen twenty-two, it is second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R nineteen twenty-two on second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call?
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R nineteen dash two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, to enter into a lease agreement with Randstad for the one fifteen North Main Street office.
Move for adoption. I'll, I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Resolution number R twenty twenty-two, second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twenty twenty-two on second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Yes. I know it's a moot point and it probably won't do any good, but for this, this ordinance, we authorize payment for public defenders and so on. And like I've always said, I wish that we, once in a while, got a card from the people that benefit from this, thanking us for the services of, of free lawyer work. We don't pay for it personally, but the taxpayers do. And I think the people that use public defender should be appreciative of, of what taxpayers give, so. And I know it's a moot point, but.
Keep trying somebody, thank you.
Maybe somebody knows somebody.
I don't think we, I don't think we got one yet. Anyway, roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty dash two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington courthouse, to enter into an agreement with the Fayette County Commissioners for the provision of public defender services.
I'll move for adoption. I'm sorry Ted.
Second.
Okay. Uh, roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next is resolution number R twenty-one twenty-two, second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twenty-one twenty-two on second reading.
Second.
Doki-doki, discussion. Roll call?
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution approving the contract with the International Association of Firefighters Local Six ninety-nine.
I'll move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call?
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Resolution number R twenty-two twenty-two, second reading.
I move we place resolution number R twenty-two twenty-two on second reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call?
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-two. A resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the City of Washington courthouse, to appoint Chief Tim Downing to represent the City of Washington courthouse on the Emergency Medical District Board in Fayette County.
I'll move for adoption on that.
Second.
Roll call?
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Next, we have resolution number R twenty-three twenty-two, second reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R twenty-three twenty-two, second reading.
Kendra, with an amendment?
Yes.
Oh, yes, oh, with the amendment, that's right. Which was three hundred and?
Nine forty-eight.
Nine forty-eight.
Okay.
Okay, so Kendra's making a motion to?
To amend.
To amend R twenty-three twenty-two to three hundred thousand nine forty-eight. Does someone want to second that?
That amendment, I'll second that.
Okay, and discussion.
This is just for the amendment, right?
I think we have to vote the amendment first.
Amendment and then?
Then we vote the, yes. But thank you Jim.
So, this is for the amendment?
This is for the amendment.
Okay.
It's changing from two thirty-eight, seven eighty-two, three, three hundred, nine forty-eight.
So, you're taking roll call for that?
Yes.
Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Now, with the amendment, do we have a motion to make the second reading of R twenty-three twenty-two?
I'll make the second, make it a motion for second reading of the amended resolution.
I'll second that for the amendment of the resolution.
Okay. Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Amended resolution number R twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-two. Amended resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager or his designee, to accept the bid and enter into agreement with Fillmore Construction for the purpose of roadway improvement on Court Street.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
Kendra, second.
Okay. Roll call?
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes. Moving to new legislation, the first is ordinance number seven twenty-two, first reading.
I'll make a motion that we give second reading on ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-two.
First reading.
First reading, I can always get that mixed up.
Second.
There you go.
Everybody was good at math.
She seconded your first.
Discussion about that one? Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number seven dash two thousand and twenty-two. An ordinance rezoning lots six oh six through six oh nine inclusive. Greg Street from R two to family residential district to R three multifamily residential district.
And finally, resolution number R twenty-four twenty-two, first reading.
I'll move we put a resolution R twenty-four twenty-two on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R twenty-four dash two thousand and twenty-two. Authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager, to make payment pursuant to the cooperative agreement with the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio referencing PID number one zero one zero nine one for the Washington Avenue project.
Okay, we got through legislation. Yeah, I was thinking as we were doing that, if you've not been to a city council meeting before, you might wonder why there's not more discussion over issues. It's because they've been discussed in committee meetings. And so, by the time we get here, most of the issues have already been talked about and worked on and all those kind of things. So, if you're wondering why, it's usually just a vote. But there are some things obviously, like DORA, that do take some time to discuss here. Okay, the last thing we do before adjournment is give everybody a chance to say something in the miscellaneous section. Mr. Christman, have you got anything?
Thank you everybody again for coming, appreciate the interest. And I don't disagree with all of you at all. I mean, I just, I think it's better for the downtown in the long run. And Mr. Lynch said if it doesn't work, we'll change it or get rid of it. That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Hawk?
Well, I, I'm grateful for my parents. I, I have a gene that's, makes me a lot. And I paid the price for that. And that same gene would probably make me an alcoholic if my parents had kept me from doing it, from drinking and same way with smoking. And I, I do appreciate them for that and I'll say that to the, I mean, they're in the grave, but I do appreciate that. And I love this town. I know I disagree with some of you, I agree with others of you, but I, I still wanna do the best for this town. And I, I conscientiously have my reasons for my opinions. And I'm, I'm just grateful for the privilege and the honor of, of being able to serve on this group, in this group.
He's about to mention the gene that made us bald.
Well, that's not a bad gene, that's a perfect head, God put hair on your rest of the heads.
Mr. Blair?
I'd like to piggyback off of your statement about the committee meetings and how everything gets to council. And emphasize that those meetings are open to the public. So, anytime you wanna come to a committee meeting, that is open to the public. Time to be an exception is an executive meeting and that's totally different. So, I encourage you to come to those and see how we do develop the ordinances to get to where you could all see and do that. Also, don't be discouraged, the meetings don't always go this long.
No.
Really. But it's good to have everybody here and especially you that got an opportunity to meet our new finance director. She hasn't been officially in the paper yet or anything, but you've got a chance to meet Christina and we're really excited about having her onboard. And I just wanna thank everybody for coming and I do value your opinion. So, Mr. Chairman.
Blair? Yes, Hernandez?
I'm just repeat, thank you for coming. It's always better to see faces out here than the blank wall. And, you know, whether we agree or disagree, that's what makes America great. And we all have lots of freedoms and I love that. And I love this community. And I think if you came in and saw me at the flower shop, you'll know that I love this community and I love my job. I love my customers and I take it very seriously. And on that, I will invite you for, because I believe a lot of this is fear, it's unneeded fear. I, I think Mr. Lynch is right and I would not promote an underage drinking. I would not promote someone being drunk on the corner, I, that's not what this is about. But I invite you to come to a wine tasting at my shop. You do not have to participate. You can hang out on the patio and listen to great music who, again, is all local. And the next one we have, I believe, is July eighth. I think that's a downtown shop pop night. So, if you're fearful, that gives you an opportunity to kinda see what it's really like. And I just don't believe it's gonna be that because I am against all those things. I'm against drunk driving, I'm against, you know, underage drinking, I'm against being out in public and inebriated and, you know, I just, but I don't think this is what that is, so. But I appreciate you guys coming because that's what it's all about.
Mr. Vice Chair, what do you got?
Well, I, again, wanna thank everybody and all your comments, which I wrote down, all your comments that you, everyone said. And you all have very, very valid comments. If we didn't live in a community, first of all, if there wasn't alcohol, we wouldn't have the restaurants we have now. And you wouldn't be going out to eat, you'd be going out of town to eat and everybody'd be coming to us complaining, how comes we don't have these restaurants? It's, it's a two-way street. I mean, it, it's unfortunate, that's the way the world has to be. I mean, it's very unfortunate, but that's the way the world has to be. If you want a nice meal, you gotta put up with the guy next to you drinking. It's just the way it is, you know, so. But you all have very, very valid points. But, you know, it is, it's another thing that helped our downtown to kinda put the city on kind of a little bit of a map. Now, maybe, instead of going out of town, some folks will stay in town on a Friday or Saturday night. Cause they can walk around. By the way, there's only four places you can get the drink that this DORA is gonna get. There's only four places in downtown. And you have to have a special cup. And you have to be made sure, these four places will make sure you're not underage and you're not going out giving it to everybody. It will not happen, I don't believe. So, but I do appreciate everyone coming, but I hope you understand where we're coming from. You know, what, what's going on here? It's not that we're promoting alcoholism. I'm not a drinker, I'm not a smoker, I never have been. So, but it, it's just something that, we live with it every single day.
So, but, it, it's just something that, we live with it every single day, everywhere we go. Every restaurant you go into, they're serving alcohol, and most of us never pay attention to it. We never know the person next to us is drinking. We don't even pay attention to it. We go about our business. So, and they go about their business, so. But anyway, thank you very much for coming, thank you for your comments. We still have one more reading on it. Who knows, things could change. So, but, I do thank every one of you coming here tonight. I do appreciate it, thank you.
Okay.
Chairman?
To finish, I'm not gonna make any more statements about Dora. You know, no matter what any of us say or any of you say, the other side can argue the opposite. So, I've said enough, we've heard enough. Uh, I am going to say, however, that Tyler Tackich, who I have had in class, and I think is just one super young man, was recognized as a Christman Award winner. And if you want to see what young people are like in Washington courthouse, I suggest you find Tyler and talk to him for a while, because you will be impressed. He is an outstanding student, he was an excellent, uh, athlete, I hate to see him graduate, uh, for that standpoint, and he is an excellent leader and one great kid. And, uh, I give him a lot of credit and his parents, Todd and Alicia Tackich. So I think the Christman Award recognizes young people, and you can't do any better than that. So, with that, uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
The two Jims are, moving to adjourn. Uh, roll call, Kelly.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.